Okay, we are here tonight for our Bountiful City Council work session on Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, and we will turn the time over to our city engineer Lloyd Chini to lead off on this discussion about I-15 interchange landscaping.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start, I want to apologize to the city of West Bountiful that has not been recently annexed and renamed to Woods Cross twice. So...
Good clarification, thank you.
As much as I love Woods Cross, we still love West Bountiful. You have obviously heard that I-15 is going to be reconstructed in the near future, and maybe I could give you just a hint of the timeline that we've been enlightened with over the last few months with our meetings, that they intend to release their RFP for contractors to propose on next month. I don't remember exactly the timeline for evaluation and award, but I'm pretty sure that they suggested that construction could begin next year. They do anticipate two consortiums of contractors to submit proposals, and so there is a pretty high level of interest out there for what's coming. As Francisco and I have been involved with the monthly meeting and update, there have been a lot of talk about landscaping and what treatments can be used along the right-of-way, and UDOT would like input from the council on your preference for some landscaping elements. And as I mentioned in the staff report, there has been some coordination among the city managers because of the proximity of the three interchanges at 4th North, 5th South, and 2600 South, that there ought to be some common theme to the landscaping. And so Francisco suggested that UDOT give us some options, and very wisely, he asked for those to be modeled at the 500 South interchange. It's very convenient for us, right? So we got three proposals, and I don't know how well those graphics came through. If you looked at it electronically, the printed version is actually pretty good, but there's kind of a simple concept in version one with some fairly nice plantings, and then the more common, just rocks, version of option two, and then the really decorative option three. Gary and I were trying to understand what the implications would be for Bountiful under some different scenarios, and so that is the basis of the two graphics that I've given you in the staff report, is that we've kind of taken two approaches to evaluating what those might cost us as Bountiful if we just raised our hand and volunteered to landscape the areas within the city limits under the 5th South interchange. So that would be on page five, the area in yellow. Now, that's not the exact area, because I've just used that as an example, because that's the current interchange configuration. If you look at the other graphics, you can see that the proposed interchange is going to be more of a traditional on-ramp, off-ramp configuration without the confusion of the diverging diamond which we have now. So just... But for the sake of discussion, we just looked at the area within the city limits using the new configuration. I would show you that on Google Earth, but it's a little messy, because it's hard to see the proposed image with the existing image and kind of understand where the limits of the landscaping would be. The second concept that we looked at was, what if it was proposed that Bountiful take, like, the south half of the interchange at 5th South? And what does that look like from a cost perspective if we add in a little extra landscaping around the east side of the northbound off-ramp around the Sizzler property? So I tried to break those out in this very simplified table on page five, give you an idea of the area that we're talking about for landscaping, and then what the individual costs would look like for each of the three options. It's important to understand that UDOT really doesn't have a preference. They're leaving this totally to us. If we left the decision to them, it would just be their native seed mix, no irrigation, and they would mow it a couple times a year, hopefully, just to keep it presentable. Any enhancements, or betterments, as they call them, they like to have the cities help fund those and, more importantly, maintain. And Gary and I are concerned about the long-term cost of maintenance for an extravagant landscaping scenario. As you drive north, perhaps the best example I could give you would be the Hillfield exit in Leighton, where they have quite an extensive amount of landscaping there. That was all funded through a cooperative agreement by the city. It's maintained by Leighton City. And when I used to go that way before the West Davis Highway opened up, it was obvious that it requires quite a bit of maintenance with the debris and keeping up with the irrigation issues. Tried to give you a couple of examples in the staff report of, you know, what are some betterments? What do these things look like in a more modern setting? I don't know if you have any questions. I'd be happy to answer those. If you want to walk through these options one at a time, and I can kind of explain what they're proposing and maybe sort of what the details are.
Can you tell me, with the table where you're summarizing the costs, that is, when it says "UDOT-based concept," does that mean that there's a scenario where they are covering those costs on that line item?
No.
Okay.
And that's a great point. I appreciate that question. UDOT will only allocate $100,000 per interchange towards landscaping, and that would not cover anything above their base treatment of stockpiling the topsoil before the construction of the new configuration, regrading and placing that topsoil, and then overseeding it with their native seed mix. There's no irrigation involved in that. There's no plantings, other than just what is broadcast in the hydroseeding type application.
Do they come mow it if they do the native seeding, ever?
Yes, they do mow it.
You said maybe a couple times a year?
A couple times a year. As I talked to UDOT employees about this, they did mention that they have cities throughout the state who will mow it more frequently, because they don't like UDOT's maintenance schedule, and they want it to look a little more presentable, so city crews will go and mow it when they think the time is appropriate. But it's kind of like a "when we get around to it" item for UDOT.
Okay.
So can I ask, just to make sure I'm understanding the table on page five? So if we were just, for sake of example, to pick option two with the decorative rock, are we looking at 149,000 plus 57 plus the Sizzler area discussion, additional 223? Like, is it the total of those three numbers?
No. Good question. I think I can explain that. So let's go to option two, which is the backside of page... It seems to be page eight. So it's the fairly plain one that has just some different colored areas immediately around 5th South. The very first row in the table on page five, those amounts represent the total cost to landscape the entire interchange in that concept. So this is the north and the south half of the freeway, just as decorative rock. The decorative rock is the areas immediately around the on and off ramps, and the green areas in what we call the gore area. The gore is the space between the on-ramp and the freeway, or the off-ramp and the freeway. That area would be a native seed mix. So to just landscape that in that very basic concept for the whole interchange as option two would be $149,000, according to UDOT's estimate. If we broke that down to the area that's only in the city limits, so what's shown on page five in the yellow highlighted area, that kind of concept, that would be $57,000 for the city. If we were to use that same option-two concept, but apply it to the graphic that's shown on page six, where we have the gore areas for the south side of the interchange and that little strip around the Sizzler, that totals up to $223,000. So that's the application of those three scenarios for each of the three options. Did that help?
That does help make sense of those numbers, so thank you.
So we can opt for any of those? Or none of those?
Yes.
I've got a question about the cost allocation. So let's just stick with option number two that we've been talking about. So in the $149,000, we're only going to be responsible for the highlighted yellow portion? I mean, that percentage? Or is this... This would be our cost or the total cost? Let's just look at the UDOT-based concept.
That's part of the conversation between the city managers, is that there hasn't been consensus on how... Let's make the assumption that everyone chooses option two. All the three cities choose option two. There hasn't been a consensus about how to divvy up the costs at each location. Is it by area within your city limits, or is there some other agreement? And that's why Gary and I thought it would be helpful to make a scenario where, you know, perhaps the city agreed to landscape or be responsible for the landscaping on the south half of the interchange, just to give you a scope of what a decision of that magnitude would cost.
But then, going back to that UDOT-based concept, option two, $149,000, regardless of how that gets divvied up between the cities, that would still be minus $100,000, because the interchange will get $100,000 investment from UDOT. So, okay.
We didn't back out the $100,000.
Okay. Is this kind of a unique situation, where you have three cities? I mean, it seems pretty unique, three cities all at one interchange. And...
It's hard for me to answer, because I'm not familiar with how, you know, the boundaries of other cities meet. But yeah, it does seem a little unique.
Because... So part of that Sizzler, what we're calling the Sizzler piece, also leads down into Woods Cross.
That's correct.
But kind of the unique thing, I think, here is it really is, on that east side with the Sizzler, it really is a gateway. It's the primary gateway into our city. I mean, we do have three exits that kind of funnel right into Bountiful City, but this is a unique one, and...
You'd want all three to look nice.
Yeah, definitely want all three to look nice. But this is the only one that we have skin in the game, right?
Yeah, that's actually in the city limits.
It's in our city limits.
So for many years, the Parks Department has had an item, and I didn't go back and look to see if it's still on the tenure capital plan, but there was plans to do some upgraded landscaping around that Sizzler property. But, you know, it never got to the top of the round two, and it always stayed at the bottom of the round two. And this would be another opportunity to take care of that wish.
Can I just ask a clarifying question, then? So going back to page six, which is interchange south half plus Sizzler, option two, that would include this Woods Cross portion?
Yes.
And it just seems so much more expensive than the base concept, which would include the north on-ramps and off-ramps as well.
Yeah, I understand what you're asking, and I probably need to go back and verify that again, but...
So this is a preliminary discussion, just to kind of help gauge, you know, help us be aware of some of these decisions that will be coming, to try to get a sense of if we have preference when it comes to materials or, you know, ideas about sharing the cost or...
Yes. That's what we're asking, is if there are one of these concepts that you prefer over the other, and, you know, to what extent do you think it's appropriate to spread that over the interchange?
Lloyd, is the gore right now the native grasses? Is that...
Yeah, that's all there is out there now.
So that is, what is existing there is the long-term appearance of what happens when UDOT puts in just the native grasses?
Yeah, there's no irrigation systems. There's no plantings out there to really sustain, so, other than what can be self-sustaining.
Now, what are the other... I might be missing... What are the other options, then, for 2600 and 4th North? Is that just whatever UDOT decides?
Well, we didn't have them prepare a sample for those. Part of that was by design, you know? We were looking for something that showed what our interest would be.
Yeah.
Presumably, they're being given the same options for those intersections of the native grasses, decorative rock, or decorative rock plus plantings.
Yeah, all three communities received the same set of concepts. I don't think they prepared different concepts for each of the interchanges. These were just to be kind of typical scenarios.
On this intersection, because it is shared by the three cities, do we need to all come to the same decision and coalesce around an idea? Or what happens if one of the cities wants to pay for, you know, if West Bountiful, for instance, wants to pay for option three on the north end of the intersection, and we and Woods Cross want to pay for option one?
Yeah, in a perfect world, we all agree on the same thing, right? I think, for the sake of discussion, for the city managers, they're all going to come with whatever their council prefers, and then leg wrestle for it, or, you know...
So these numbers are from them, right? From UDOT?
From UDOT, yes.
Yeah. Did these numbers surprise you? Did you...
No, not really, because everything is always a little more expensive when you're dealing with the UDOT system, because they have to deal with the federal funding and the requirements for that, and among their own requirements, things are just generally more expensive.
Yeah. It seems... It just seems expensive. I mean, I know that I'm oversimplifying, and I'm thinking, yeah, just go out there and put some rocks, and how expensive should it be? But, yeah.
Yeah. I think if you started to do the math in the long term for the labor and the maintenance, you know, the initial investment looks pretty small in hindsight, if you have to dedicate very much time to upkeep.
Yeah.
So the UDOT-based concept numbers, did those come from UDOT?
Came from UDOT.
And then the other numbers are from...
They're from my takeoff, using their unit prices.
Okay. And so we're not giving UDOT any final answers, but what we are giving is direction to this, to Gary, on our preference, so he can continue to work on negotiations with the other city managers.
And are you hoping for some direction tonight? Or is this just more, this is something for us to keep in mind?
We would like some direction from you, if there's one of these concepts that appeals to you more than the other. We would like to know that. Or if there's an extent that appeals to you more than another, we do kind of need a feel for how far you're willing to landscape.
And just, sorry, last question. Option two, decorative rock, interchange south plus Sizzler, that is the total which would still be divided somehow between Bountiful and Woods Cross?
No, according to my takeoff, that is the cost of the area shown in figure four.
So because the area is similar to the area shown in figure three, except for that little teeny border, the skinny border by the Sizzler, that's why I was wondering if it's the enhanced gore parts that are in Woods Cross?
I mean, I'll go back and check it, but I use their graphics and the model that we have of the freeway to come up with the areas.
I'm so excited to know what a gore is, so...
You have them on your slip-on shoes as well. There's food for thought. Mayor, might I opine?
Yes.
I don't like the idea of high-cost, ongoing maintenance. And being a geological nerd, I'm happy with mixed rocks, but I think that it would also be nice for us to use some artwork to decorate up whatever concrete UDOT gives us on those interchanges, or on that interchange. That's my thought.
So your vote is whatever is low maintenance, low cost?
Mm-hmm. But still looks nice to people like me. And then add some art.
Well, I think that makes a lot of sense. I like that direction. Any other thoughts, council?
I agree with Councilmember Higginson and the staff recommendation on concept two, for the reason it's stated in the report, the balance of aesthetics and cost and maintenance. Hopefully, in the future, as this all comes to fruition, I really am in favor of the additionally interchange south, well, adding the Sizzler. It is a gateway into our city, and I've thought so many times how nice it would be to have that landscaped a little bit, just in any way as an entrance into the city. So I'm just putting my two cents out there, that I am in favor of option two. And also, I hope that we can look forward to making some kind of a nice balance on both sides, especially as we welcome people into Bountiful City, and maybe we could continue to think about some of those artistic elements, or welcome plaque, or monument, or something that says, "Welcome to Bountiful City, Best City in Utah." So I'm just putting it out there, I hope we can include that.
I second that text.
Anybody else?
I agree with concept two. I'd love to understand more the figure on option four. I would love to share that cost more with Woods Cross, because the option-two portion just within the city limits in the middle row is a comfortable price. The option-two in the last row of the chart is, you know, one that I think would be doable, but would be more fun to share it with friends.
Yep, that's my preference. Good, yeah, good suggestion. Anything else from any of you?
I'm just, I'm curious to see what it looks like going into 4th North, too, because 5th South is good, but it's all tied. That's a whole view of Bountiful from the freeway, from 5th South to 4th North, and so I'm really curious to see how it looks coming off the freeway, 4th North, as well, because right now, it's just a jungle of junk trees.
Okay.
Have you seen the plan yet for the 400 North interchange?
No. Oh, well, for the freeway alignment, yes.
Yes. Can you describe it to us?
The biggest change at 4th North is going to be the off-ramp from southbound I-15. Instead of being a left-hand exit, it's going to change to the traditional right-hand exit and become a flyover ramp to go over the freeway and back down to 5th West. If you've been headed north and gone on the new West Davis corridor, that big flyover ramp that takes you back over the freeway would be similar to that.
So it won't join any surface streets on the west side of the freeway?
No.
It'll fly over and join 5th West?
Yes. That left-hand off-ramp is one of just a handful across the country, and...
Pretty handy.
It is.
Very handy. And it was reported to us that the, I believe it was the FHA is trying to get rid of all of the left side exits.
That's a bummer, I really like that one. So maybe similar, do you remember the old 6th South, I-15, big ramp that would come around and something like that? So that's going to be very visually significant now on that.
Yes.
What about the 4th North? Is it just going to stay as-is with its one entrance to go southbound on I-15?
It pretty much stays the same, because they just have such limited options for what can be done there with the train tracks and the freeway, and of course, the commercial stuff to the east. They're really kind of hemmed in about as tight as it can be. So it's going to be very familiar. The biggest changes are going to be some shared use paths on either side, so that pedestrians and cyclists can both use that. It is going to get a little wider, and then more changes towards the intersection at 5th West as they add some turn lane capacity.
Thank you.
Mayor, might I ask one more question?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Is it safe to assume that the UDOT-controlled areas east of the northbound on-ramp and west of the southbound off-ramp will just be the native weed mix?
Yes, I think that's likely.
Okay. So even though we'll be dressing up in some fashion that narrow gore between lanes, we will have no control, really, over the larger space, much larger space that lies outside of those lanes?
Yep.
Okay?
They would be willing to landscape as much as we would be willing to pay for. And if, you know, I don't know that they are, they have any real feelings about that, other than they want us to be happy with what is built. And if we don't care, then, you know, they have their standard protocol, and that's, that'll be the native mix.
Mayor, I know we have Councilmember Child online, in case we wanted to get her two cents.
Councilmember Child, do you have anything to add before we close this work session?
I think my questions have been answered. I agree with the option two. I think, I think rock looks tidier for longer than other landscaping options. I'm particularly not fond of the native grass with limited plantings mix that we see along the Wasatch Front. But I also agree with Councilwoman Higginson. It would be nice to add a little, a little something to make it special as an entrance to Bountiful.
Great. Thank you for that. Okay, well, do you think you have the questions and the hopes that we had? Thanks for passing those along and representing us.
We'll keep you updated on coordination with our neighboring cities and let you know how it looks like it's going to flush out.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll pause just briefly and come right back for our regular city council meeting in just a minute.